Ale a amata iye. Tatou ilalongo taale afalvalu, taimi fatula ngai nafoi. Ya e, momoala vau na sile vi inga malafatayi, tatou tamali lai. Ya ono'ala na'anga leli. Uma fa'iayo na morio'maila tu soifua nga'tu tatou olala. Ni foitou aso o oliva'aso. Tatou nga luenga fasolo. Ya olmielea. Ole a o sauniya sinatalo pupu. Ya amata ngai tatou nga luenga. Ya ona'ala loalea ile ta'upu pe'ana tafa'ina mulai yaso. Ma'tou tamali lai. Ma'tou tuta palo va'anga leli ni taya'ao. Malapule fasoa oma'ua'i soifua maleola. Uma fa'iayo na ma'tou tufa'oi ma'foi. Ila ma'ota etusa o ma'tou nga luenga fasolo liyaso. Ya amata imi uma o liyai fonitanga. Ma'tou tifa'fo'ia'tu lavi inga malafatayi tele. Ona'ala pule fasoa oma'fu'a'i liyai manuia malefasolo. Ina'ala nga luenga pe'ana aofia'i le fonofaitula fonu liyai vaitau. Fatayla uso'swani o ma'tou oma'fu'a'anga. Ma ma'tou filifilinga. Ma'tou watulava ilaufiyo la'anga'anga ina'ala ma'tou fa'mo'ama'anga. Ina'ia manuia me'uma ma'tou tifa'ii unfa'atula fonu ina'ala mosanuia olato nu. Ta'tai mai la ufiyo liyaso ilfonitanga ma'anga luenga uma la fe'anga yai. Ya fa'ia me'uma etusa maleu finanga'alo ya tele a pe'aso vi inga. O ma'tou se'emanu o ma'tou fa'letonu. Ila ma'tou nga luenga o ma'tou tangati ta'tou tas. Fa'ma'anga'alo ma'tou e ala itu'tu ta'ua Yesu ki'risa'ala ma'tou li'if'ao'ala. Amen. Ya ole tatou nga luenga liyai vayaso. O le ilalongo lea. Piri tau fa'afi tulafono tau fa'afi. Ole piri numela valu ya malapiri numela fitu. Piri numela v- ah valu ole fatula iylea ole kovana. Po'ole lutena kovana. Mai olato fi pe'ayaini fa'letonu. Uo fa'ma'ania fa'atula fonu. Ya malepiri numela fitu. Ya ole su'ia inga lea o'aso. Ole fatauta o'ina. Ya male amata inga nofo'inga. Ile va'ala fonofaitula fonu ya fa'pe'a fo'i la fi'anga'anga kovana malelutena kovana. Ina'ia ta'ofia'i fa'fi'tau ili fatena inga i'fo'fo'anga. Ile pa'ufa. Fatasi o'ia fo'fo'anga ile asotolu o'ya'nuwali. Ya olana'ala o'ia ile ta'ala sangha. Ina'ia fatauta nu inapea le asuinga ole su'inga nofo'inga. Ale ma'ala le fonofaitula fonu ile asotolu o'ya'nuwali. Ae ole su'ia inga nofo'inga male amatanga le nofo'inga fowale kovana malelutena kovana. Ya tu'u ile aso sefulua'ya'nuwali. Ita'asanga itala fe'anga yai. Ona'leleto yai lea o sefatena inga. O lea su'ia inga sa'ta'umuli mudi. Itu la'anga fo'io lo'oya'ia su'ia inga nofo'inga. Ale konkulesi fa'pe'a fo'i ile perestene. Ole konkulesie ole asotolu fo'i su'ia ile nofo'inga ale konkulesi. Ale asolu'us fulua'ya'nuwali. Su'ia ile nofo'inga ale perestene. Ya lea la'inga ta'umuli mudi ya ile tatou tulafono lea. Ina'ia fa'pe'ana fo'io na ave'ase'ina lea fatena inga. Ma itu la'anga tulafono malafatauta nu ina'ala to'tu te ma'tatou nga luenga so'swani. Ya ole atatou amata ilpiri numela valu. Wa. Tu'ina mai ya nisi o savala wina le lo'isili. Ya ufa'tu'aina la'ula'ua lo'ofanga singase'ali lo'isili ni taya'ao. Fat'a'io lo'oya'ini su'ia ole official lo'isili po'olo'ia le fi'anga'anga kovana isili. Ah eh morimawina etusa ole tatou ta'asanga. Um, I would like to uh open the uh this public hearing. Uh on Senate Bill number eight. Uh this is the bill to set forth the provisions for the impeachment. Of the governor or the lieutenant governor as the case may be. Uh during the progress of their administrations. For reasons that are set forth in the uh in the bills. So uh we invited the Attorney General to testify however. The uh Attorney General uh is uh not able to attend this morning. Because she is uh obviously fell ill or some reason. That she could not be in uh here today. But uh is there anyone from the Attorney General's office uh representing the Attorney General's office? Present today? Apparently no. Is there anyone from the governor's office? Okay, come forward sir. Anybody else uh?
Talofa Barry Font, Governor's Legal Counsel.
Can you restate your name sir please?
Barry Font.
Barry?
Yes.
Alright, may we call you Barry for short?
Please do sir.
Alright, thank you. I am Tong'iola, the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations. And uh the uh rest of the senators, the Honorable President and Vice President are both uh in the committee of the whole. And we appreciate your presence here this morning responding to our invitation. For any comments that the Office of the Governor may have regarding the bill as written. As we endeavor to uh discuss and review uh the the bill as presented. Uh my question is have you had an opportunity to review the bill uh that is before the Senate this morning?
Yes Senator.
Okay, then uh let me uh give the floor to you for any comments. Uh before we open up to any questions the membership may have.
Thanks again Senator and Talofa again uh esteemed senators. It's a big honor to be here uh speaking to you for the first time. For a fifth generation commercial fisherman and second generation Navy electrician to now be addressing this esteemed body. Life is uh an interesting ride sometimes, so thank you uh for considering my very brief comments. Uh the governor uh is in principle has no disagreement with uh the bill as it's presented. I think the only comment that I would like you to consider is because of the uh the constitution. Constitutional amendment has now become official. Uh this impeachment language is now in our constitution. Section twenty second, twenty section, section twenty six of Article Four. Um and so I do have just a little bit of a legal concern that since we have a verbatim. The bill or the code is essentially verbatim in the constitution. If we add another provision that just creates. Since the constitution supersedes the code, it creates a little dissonance there. Uh the two slightly conflict. And so in inter court interpretation, I'd be a little concerned that the the constitution and its interpretation would uh prevail against the code. It also could be that the code would simply provide additional guidance. Um so that isn't a certainty. And that is the end of my brief comments.
Thank you sir. Uh and uh are there any suggestions to uh address that uh potential uh from the perspective of the executive? Or you will leave that to us to work it out?
I would leave that to your capable counsel to help you with. Uh I'd be just guessing, uh you might want to change the this impeachment code. To maybe more interpret that constitutional amendment, so provide further guidance. Uh word it in that way rather than to use that same language and just add this subsection.
Okay, thank you for your comments and thank you for the advice. Um are there any questions? E'ni isili ole ole aise ole ta'ofia lo'isiliye e'afoi e sapsapaya ile. Ile official kovana ile i'ale piri pe'ana fa'afinga vanga na'ai. Ta'luai ona ole nganga'ana olale ro'fa'anga ina'ala piri etu'sa leli ya male nganga'ana ole fa'ava'e. Ya ina'ia ta'ofia ni fatena inga ile fa'atonutonu ina'ala tulafono. Se'ito etanga'ila le'iai pe'ia'isi si'awala ma'fa'iayo na fatonutonu tulafono. Ina'ia o'ani fatena'anga male fa'ava'e iseta'eta'imi omomoa. Pe'afaye mana'omia le fatonu ina'ala o tulanga'ia po'fe'ala tulafono. Ya emautino'aa ole fa'ava'e aae e'afoi e. Emalosi'atu ole fa'ava'e lo'ole tulafono. Ya ole me'ala na'aa pe'ole ole la'anga'ana fo'ina'sa'ia ile taimi lo'oya'ia tatou. Ele'isi me'afae na'ala piri ole piri na'ala fatata otoma yai le fa'anga'io'inga. Ole afo'io le ole tulanga'le ya molafatula i'ao satasi. O'ia tofinga pe'afae e fa'osia ile finanga'ala fonofaitula fonu. A'ayaini isili lo'tou fi'anga'ia taina sa'uno'la'ofionut.
Na, ma'ye fo'ifaro longa tarano'ino'ntau po'le male ta'ua. E'pa'ala isili ona ye'ili me'ale sa'unga bienesa'uno'ala tulanga'ala ole fa'anga'io'inga ole proseso le me'ali ni. Ona'ala tulanga'le ile pe'afae wa'tou me'ale shu'le ta'uma'io le introduce mai o'ao inayi fa'yel famsinoga. Ae fi'ero'ala po'o'inklu me'anga'itu'nu'ala fa'ava'e. Me'ale fa'anga'io'inga such as angarelo'ole ospe'ala me'anga'ii tulanga'ia e'afia'ala famsinisili o'ia'anga presidinga'ala tulanga'ia fa'yel famsinoga inayi ole. Ole me'alea e'ali o'ii. Ma'ne'efoi na'uma na'esa'uno'ala ma'esa'uno'ala ma'fo'i ile tatou onma'uni taya'ao. Eh etu'sisatu sa'leyan me'alea maleme'ale tulatu constitution. Le'fo'ue sa'uno'ala maleuma'ala ma'fo'ima'ata'ua e. E'ave'an me'ale constitutionala malemlosiya kul'constitution. Ae pa'ula me'ala tatou nga'io'inga bienesa'uno'ala. Ina'ia o'anga'asili tulanga'ala me'ale'ala ya'iaman tatou fa'malosi'ala e'ala'ii. E'pa'ana'ala me'ale po'ala itere'ala po'ia'ia ile prositesle bienesa'uno'ala ile presiding ole 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 famsinosili inayi. Ona'ala'ala'ala ospe'ala'sa'anga tatou i'ava'pe'ala'ala'ala e'itu'nu'ala constitutione'ala prosesle. Ya pa'una'ala meta'isili tio'io'ofionu.
In the bottom minute uh the comment is agrees with your uh the same concern that we uh we have. As uh you can see from the uh body of the bill. We did not take out uh the subsection, the old subsection E. Uh which is now subsection F. Uh which eventually uh the provisions, uh all the additional provisions to this particular section. Will have to become constitutional amendments, so that's uh remains the goal that although we're putting it in the statutory. Into the statute now, uh that in the future that it will be represented to the voters for the approval uh in amending the the constitution. Which I believe will address the concerns that you have.
Understood, thank you Senator. Sorry, I do not speak Samoan, I apologize.
Oh, I thought you understood everything he just said.
So it's in there, right? It's in there in the Constitution. The process such as like when uh when the uh the House uh present the uh. The article of impeachment and then when it gets here to the to the Senate. Then the Senate's the one that's going to be the judges and we have have the uh Chief Justice to be presiding on this uh thing. So I want to make sure that it's include in the uh in the Constitution. It spells out in Constitution.
So the Constitution just outlines the right to impeachment and then the Fonu establishes rules to govern that process.
And that's part of this uh this section.
Oh, okay.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Yeah, the initial city. No'ofionu, please do.
I think this is uh it's crystal clear this morning. The impeachment is under the Constitution. Now, this is the the process, so it's nothing wrong. Unless the process is in is in the Constitution. And then it's different story. The removal of the governor is in the Constitution. But how you remove it? So this is the bill. To remove it, you know? So it's nothing wrong. Ma'fakai'ala'ofionu ro'ol'ola sa'aka'unga'io'inga kaya'angi.
Tay, le'ua sa'uno'ala ma'fo'ima'ua e monyo'ala'utev ayat yai e pe'ana sa'uno'ala fo'ile fi'anga'sintoa. Ya ale aisi isili ya ale fa'angfo'ala tatou molma'ua si'fasolo mai lo'ofaisi tele'ala tatou lisilini taya'ao. Uh Barry, there is no further questions from the uh membership and again, thank you very much for taking time. To share this moment with us and your uh and your wisdom and advice. And as you've heard from the members, that uh your your advice is well taken. And uh the process that is put forward by this bill is in aid of the constitutional authority. To undertake any impeachment for governor or lieutenant governor if the case is warranted. And again, thank you for appearing before the Committee of the Senate this morning.
Fatay'ala for the opportunity.
Yeah, manuia laso. O lo'oya'ini si'yo. Lo'oo. Ua'fatu'aina le la'ula'ua lo'oo yai'ya ala'mfa'na'ua le'anga'uma'unga itafuna. Yeah, I would like to ask the indulgence of the other witnesses uh that are appearing this morning. And we have uh witnesses from the Ta'funa High School uh that are present with us and since they have to go back to. You know, as early as they can be to uh back to school. So I'll call upon the teacher. Sumaima ma'ala le. Ow. Yeah. O'ele swafa. Sa'so'u. So'be'ema'ala sunga'ala fa'ya'anga. E'fe'alo le'umsui'ala le'fi'atul prestane male'usui prestane. Malafoyo le fi'anga'sintoa. Ua pa'uma'ali taya'ao tatou ilalongo fa'afeloi'atu fa'talu fatu'ala sunga'ala fa'ya'anga. Ya emise o'ala ole'anga'uma'unga itafuna. Ya ua uh pa'uma'ya'ana ole fi'ama'awina pe'fa'adi'afoi se'manatu. Etusa ole tulafono tau fa'afi alma'nu numela valu. Ya ile fatula i'alea o tofi'ala tatou malo male'tunu. Ya olmielea etala sangha'tu'aise'ii sa'uno'ala mai ilausunga'ala fa'ya'anga po'oe swafa. Fa'na'ua la'ala monima'ua ya ona'ala loalea ilautau sa'uno'anga. Yeah. Ki'ala'ala.
Ya ole. Ole masalo'ala ma'tou pitola'ao. Ya ole'ala'ala tatasi la'va'ala sunga'ala. Ya pola talu'ifoi ya apelu Mann. Ya o'ia'ala se'tasi o senior student. Ya pola se'anga fa'iwaso fo'ile ni t'asanga. Ya ole sunga'ala fa'ya'anga ya tolu'santoa. Ya ma'uni. Ya ole'ala ma'ta'wa'ima. A'ye'fo'ini si'fa'isili po'osuan ya oma'ula'ala lea ole'ala fe'anga'ima male'sapori ro. Ya ole'ala mama'ata'ua. Ya o la'tu'tu tasilea ile. Ile fa'na'ua ya'fa'ima su'ia ma'tou ni taya'ao lo'ava'te.
O'ele swafa ole fa'ya'anga?
O ta'vi'uvu. Kolose'iri.
Malech fa'ya'anga?
Ya o tolu'santoa.
Fatay. Ya ole'ala le'ala'ala monamawina o apelu Mann. M A N N?
Yes sir.
Ya fatay. Ya fatay tele male fa'aringa'ala sunga'ala ile ni fa'ya'anga. Ya fa'fe'lo'ia'tu'ala sunga'ala apelu. Ya ole'ala noniye sa'uno'ala e'tusa ole monima'ua po'osa. Uh fa'tu'anga fo'io ile komichel'mot ona'ala ni tulafono tau fa'afi.
Honorable Senators Talofa. O lo'uinga. O apelu Mann. And I am a senior at Ta'funa High School. I would like to thank you all distinguished members of the Fonu. For providing me as well as members of the general public of American Samoa. The opportunity to come here and express our. Opinions, perspectives and um ideas regarding this new impeachment process bill. I believe. I strongly believe that the impeachment process is a critical part of our constitutional system. As introduced by Honorable Senator Tong'iola tulafono. This bill is designed to hold the governor and lieutenant governor accountable for their actions. While we acknowledge the potential for misuse and the challenges and limitations that come with the impeachment. We believe that it is absolutely necessary for ensuring fair and accountable democracy. As informed citizens of American Samoa. It is crucial that we both understand both the strengths and limitations of the this proposed bill. With this in mind, I would like to highlight the key principles that make impeachment necessary. First and foremost is upholding the rule of law. A key principle of democracy is that no one is above the law. Not citizens, lawmakers, and especially the governor and lieutenant governor. In nineteen ninety-eight, President Bill Clinton was impeached for perjury and obstruction of justice. More recently, we may recall that President Donald Trump was impeached. For abuse of power and obstruction of Congress. These cases show that impeachment impeachment is vital in enforcing accountability. And today, this process should continue to hold our leaders responsible for any misconduct. Second, impeachment ensures checks and balances in our government. Impeachment is a key part of checks and balances. Allowing the legislature to oversee the executive and judiciary. This bill prevents conflicts of interest between the executive branch and the AG's office. For example, the threat of impeachment can deter misconduct. The possibility of impeachment likely influenced President Nixon to resign in nineteen seventy-four before formal proceedings began. Third, impeachment preserves public trust. Impeachment provides a mechanism to remove officials who betray the public's trust. Helping maintain confidence in our government. And preserve a peaceful transition of power. If we look around us in the world today. Oftentimes, many of the countries that are experiencing domestic instability, civil war. And constant power struggles are those that do not have specific outlined provisions within their constitution. Or their laws to accommodate for impeachment, which would thus enable a peaceful transition of power. While impeachment is a vital tool for upholding the law. Ensuring checks and balances and preserving public trust. It also comes with concerns that need to be carefully addressed. As informed citizens, we must acknowledge these concerns and understand their impact on our democratic system. And we hope that such concerns can be taken in consideration for a potential revision of the bill at hand. Firstly, is the potential for political abuse. Uh we have a strong concern that impeachment may be misused as a political tool. Rather than a tool for justice. Any concerns to this? We believe that some it may prompt some lawmakers to pursue it for personal reasons rather than genuine wrongdoing. This will mean that the will of the Fonu may not reflect the will of majority of American Samoa constituents. We also like to highlight the impact on governance. Numerous impeachment proceedings can be time consuming and divert the attention of this distinguished chamber. From focusing on more pressing issues and matters affecting our territory. Furthermore, the impeachment process can disrupt government functions. Reducing its ability to address the territory's needs effectively. There's also concern for public perception and national unity. To enact impeachment proceedings, it may deepen political divides and worsen existing tensions within the territory. Furthermore, constitutional interpretation challenges. The term malfeasance in on page one, line sixteen in the proposed bill is vague. And could lead to debates of what truly constitutes an impeachable offense. Despite these concerns, I strongly support this bill because impeachment is essential for upholding the law. Maintaining checks and balances and preserving public trust in our government. While there are challenges, the benefits far outweigh the risks. And I believe this bill will help ensure that our leaders are held accountable for their actions. I firmly believe this bill is necessary for the continued health of our democracy and the future of American Samoa. Thank you.
Uh Mr. Mann, that uh section of the bill you uh justify to that is vague. And you want us to address, what is that citation?
Yeah, um it's on line sixteen.
Line sixteen of page two?
Uh yes.
Okay. Let's see if uh.
Oh, line uh twenty-one, apologies.
Twenty-one?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not seeing that.
Yeah.
What what page are you talking about?
Um it's on a. It's on lined twenty-six. In section one and it's also located on line twenty-one. On uh in section, section uh. And also on line seventeen of the preamble.
Okay.
Section one?
Yeah, it's in uh on in the preamble. On line seventeen. And also on line twenty-one. And also on line twenty-one, twenty-one of the preamble.
Okay. We will look at those, the whereasses, the whereasses are not part of the bill. In the, in the drafting, these are explanations that are provided for the public understanding. So they do not become part of the law. The law begins with page two and line twenty when it says, "Be it enacted." And then section one and section two that follows is, is part of the statute. But we will take your concerns with the whereasses because the whereasses are going to be important in the interpretations of the statute for the courts to look at what was truly the intention of the legislature. So those things are just as important, even though they are not part of the codification itself. It does help in interpreting the thinking and the desire of the, of the body, of the legislature in making the... So it's, it's, it's important, we just needed to understand exactly what you're talking about. And we will take a look at it. We will, we will amend those whereasses if, you know, as you testified. Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like, I'd like to note that the same term of vagueness, it also carries on into section one after the being enacted part, it's found on line twenty-seven.
Okay.
So the term, the term that we have in question is malfeasance, right? So malfeasance and wrongdoing, right? We believe that, I think...
Well, the purpose for that, for your understanding is malfeasance may not be statutory criminal violations, but they are still bad acts. So malfeasance are actions that may not result in criminal conviction, but they are just as bad that, you know, that warrants the, the consideration in addition to other... So it doesn't, like, the governor doesn't have to be convicted of, of the offense. But he commits acts that are just as bad and, you know... So that's what malfeasance is.
Senator, would this be more like ethical issues?
Well, this, this is the language that we took straight out of the Constitution. So it's already in the Constitution. So the, the intention of the bill is to make this portion of the, of the new statute identical with the part that's already in the Constitution. And you're right, it could be ethical, ethical violations that doesn't result in criminal convictions, but there are unethical and just bad behavior. For example, if he loads up the whole government with all his relatives and, you know, and all that, and that's, you know, something that we do not want for, for the government. And if we look at it and surrounded only by his own relatives just to load up the workforce and, you know, something like that, equivalence. All right? Is that, is that it, sir?
Mr. Senator, I have another question that I'd like to ask. I was wondering, so it mentions upon the ratification of this bill, will, how will the Fonu go about, the government as a whole go about creating, you know, a criteria to assess whether a, a sitting governor or lieutenant governor's actions are, you know, warrant impeachment? How would they determine, determine that?
Well, these, these, the section that you mentioned in page one, section one subsection B, lines twenty-six and twenty-seven of page two, those grounds are set forth, and those are the justifications that are needed. So the governor has committed malfeasance in office or he's committed corruption in office. He, his dereliction of duty. That's a ground which as he delegates all his powers to everybody who's making decisions and he's not making decisions that are appropriate and good for the people, good for the government. Or taking too many vacations off island or things like that and leaves the office to other people to run. So he's not minding the, the office, he's not minding the government. He's just off doing his own thing and leave the government to the lieutenant governor and maybe other people. Or high crimes, high crimes, yeah, we deem that to be serious offenses under our criminal laws, felonies, dishonesty, and misdemeanors which may be minor criminal violations, but too often, too much, that adds up to downright bad, bad person. I cited the example previously to you folks. If like a governor in, under this bill was convicted of thirty-four felonies like Trump. Trump is a president right now, is the president of the United States, but he's, he's a felon. He's convicted, he was convicted by jury of thirty-four felony offenses. That would be grounds for impeachment in our, under this law. So that process, as I explained the other day that you were here, the House of Representatives will look at it. And then if they put together the case and they find that there is sufficient of those violations that warrants impeachment, then they send the articles of impeachment to the Senate that will hold the trial, hold the trial here. And that's where I explained that the chief justice will preside and then the decision will be made by the eighteen senators.
Ya o a'tu'ngalunga ole atali ile'ua fa'airoa mai lona sapsapa'ia ole tato tula'fono tau fa'afi. Olona ta'afi ya ole neitula'fono e mana'omia tele ina'ia fa'ma'alu sia'a'ia tata'usta'ia o'ala'ula tula'fono e male'langona ele'a'isi e'lunga'ia'ula tula'fono e ma'ulunga lava le tula'fono ma'le'tato nonofo usi'usta'ia tula'fono ma'lonalu'ua olisile'a'ua'ala ema'fa'ia'i ona'fa'ta'unguina le fa'a paleni ina o'a'ia ya fatasi'a'i ma'mata'fayoi la'ala'tutusa'ula ma'lo'olo'ngalu'ena le i'ala'tato fe'anga ma'lo'. Ya malonatolu ole a'ualalea ema'fa'ia'i ona'to'e fa'a tupula'ia le tari tonu ole atenu i'ye'olo'ao tautia ya tau fina'ole, ole ma'lo' e'ia ina'ia'ula'tou'a tungalunga ya ole atungalunga momua inane'i avea ya le nei a'ula e fe'ima me'fa'inga'alu'enga fa'apurikiki e tau fa'aleanga tuai tau fina'ala ma'lo'. Ya a'ule fa'ongai na fe'ima'au'penga ole fa'ma'uni'alea ole fa'msino'anga tautu i tula'anga o tula'anga tofi. Ya ole atungalunga longatolu ya ole tula'anga e'a'fi'a'i ya ngalu'enga olo'ofa'angai marikovana, marilutena kovana. A'ole olonata'afi ileva'a'ia itatono le ne'ipili e ole olona'ongaa esiri'atuli ta'ua nai lo'a tungalunga i'olo'oi'a ale'ala le'ala sapsapa'ia e'ia ya ma'lanavasea nga fo'i o'i'atu'anga ma'le'ipili pe'ana tau fa'afi ina'ia'ia'isi tau fina'itatono le tula'fono ema'fa'ia'i ona'fayoi'a e'ia ina ya'ole tau fa'apula'atona'ale monma'ua le atali. Moli'atula fa'afai lau sunga Ape'lu, mole monma'ua ma'tango'fi'e ole'anga ina e au'ili'ili'ina ya tau'olumanga ole le neitula'fono tau fa'afi. A'uni si fo'i fa'ta'ita'inga o'e'aumai'ia iluma'ala'mot e'ole 'ia'ia uni si tula'anga i perestene'ua tuona'ia ya'malitula'anga fo'i na'ia'ia tau'olumanga o'ala'tato fe'anga ma'lo' ile United States e fa'apu'ula'ia le ta'ua olo'fina'ala ile neitula'fono tau fa'afi. Omo'tua ma'tango'fiema tari'ali le'ia'ala'mot ya fa'au tuanga fo'i o'e'aumai'ia a'maisia'ia olo'tou'langona ile fa'ta'unguina o'i'anga'alu'enga a'ula'anga iluma'ala'tenu'uma lanafayanga ma'lo'. Ya ya lo'fa'ala tu'a e fa'manui'ali tahu'ai lau sunga fa'afe'fo'i o'to'uma ile vasea'afa'iwa so le neitou sanga ina'ia o'to'songsong'aa pe'ale'a'ua'ina ma'ia tu'ui o'tou mahofau le ta'ua olo'tou fina'alo itaita'inga'ala ma'lo' a'ua o'i'ate o'tou onisi o'e'ole atula'ima'ili loman'a etau'ave tau fina'ia ma'tou tenu'ofoa tuai ya a'maisi fo'i o'tofina'ia tata'tu talano'a'ia kovana, marilutena kovana. Ya ole nganga'af'afai ole'ua atangia mai ya ti'oe'le atali etau'a olo'tou fina'alo olo'ata mai lau'tou sila'sila olo'ata mai ya olo'tou manatu ile tula'anga o'o'e'ia'ia tato fe'anga ma'lo' ma'ia tula'anga olemafa'ana'ana'ia ma'tou lotu. Olo'ota'oto o'tou fina'alo ma'oto mahofau tula'anga'ia moneta'ita'inga'ala fe'anga ma'lo' ile'anga iluman'a. Ya manui'ale va'ango tuto'oe'ole'a'ua'ina ya i'uma'ala manui'ia fa'a'ua'ua o'tou'a'ongaa ya amaua se'oto ma'se'ata mai to'fo'i mai tau tu'ala'atenu'ua e'aua tau tisosola to'e'aumai nei e'fa'ita'ata'ula ma'lo' fa'ala'atenu'ua fa'io'tou'a'inga tau si'oto ekalisia. Ya outel'angona o'ina'alea etau'oto ale fa'mo'emo'engoro'ia fe'uni si tula'fono olo'ama'tou ngalu'ua'ia mole pui'pu'ia o'a'ia a'tou'alo le'tenu'fa'ana'ua le'tenu' mole'anga iluman'a. Ya ole a'ia'isi taimio na to'elongoa tufo'i le'ia ya ma'ava tu'uni si o kopia tula'fono tau fa'afi'ia ya a'ia'fo'isi'la'anga e'fa'fi'a fa'adi'ia inatu'ula'fono ya etari'ali le'ia'ala'mot ala'tou to'tari'uma'ia e'ama'ifoi'ini fa'au tuanga mo'ia tula'anga. Ya fa'afai'atuli lau sunga i'auluasunga i faia'ongaa ya mo'la'ua'ina o'tupula'anga le'tenu'. Fa'afai'fo'i lau'ta'ita'inga olo'tata'ima'ia'ia'ula'tou fina'alo ina'ia mafai ona'fa'ta'oto ya'ala'tou'ala'fu'a i tula'anga tautu ma'tula'anga tau sa'fi'ia e tata'ia'ilo'ala'tou'ala'man'a a'ua'ase manui'ao'a'inga ekalisia malitato ma'lo' manui'anga'alu'enga le'iasu. Ya ma'afai'atuli sunga perestene'ama'le'ma'alu senate ya mole fano'anga fo'i le atali ina neitaya'ua fa'afai'atfo'i ya mole avn'oa tafuna'ia manutel'ena ngalu'enga le'iasu ma'ftai.
Yeah. Yeah, James McGuire and David Weisner, are you still present in chambers? All right, if you could come forward to the witness desk, please. Welcome to the hearing of the committee of the whole of the Senate. And may I ask if you have both had the opportunity to review the text of the Bill SB-08?
Yes.
Yes, we have.
Okay.
I have.
All right, I'll start with you, Mr. Weisner. You have the floor, and you may offer any, please introduce yourself for the benefit of the members and then proceed to, for any comments.
Thank you. Ta'iamanui laufi'onga, honorable Chairman Tong'io'la and the honorable members of the Senate. My name's David Weisner, I'm a private attorney from District fourteen, Alataua. And my presence here today is to comment on the pending legislation that amends ASCA 4.0109. Now, this bill is a slight modification of the existing statute. It doesn't change any procedures, but simply adds a few more grounds for impeachment. So I don't see any problems with the actual language of the bill, but my interest in this legislation stems from the laws relating to independent prosecutors who are appointed to advise the Fonu during the, during an impeachment investigation. So as a member of the bar, I or any of my colleagues might at any time be appointed to handle one of these cases. So I wanted to take this opportunity to understand a little more about the legislative intent behind it and raise some potential issues that Counsel Fund, Counsel Barry from the governor's office raised in his testimony. So just a brief history, the revised constitution of American Samoa was amended in nineteen seventy-seven, and that was the first time there was an elected, popularly elected governor and lieutenant governor. So naturally, the impeachment statute, ASCA 4.0109, was passed the same year. And as Senator Tong'io'la mentioned, that statute has subparagraph E that states at the appropriate time and in the appropriate manner, this section or its substance should be considered as a constitutional amendment to the revised constitution of American Samoa. Now, in twenty twenty-two, during the constitutional referendum of the five amendments that were passed, Amendment eight called for the inclusion of a, excuse me, the inclusion of impeachment process for the governor and lieutenant governor. That was approved sixty-one percent to thirty-nine percent. Now, I have a copy of the actual ballot that the voters such as myself filled out during the election, and it reads, I quote, "This amendment shall include an impeachment process of the governor and lieutenant governor." There was never any explicit language contained in that, in that ballot that stated what the constitutional amendment procedure was going to be. As mentioned, there's already one contained in statute, but the stat, the constitutional amendment just stated that one should be implemented. It never mentioned ASCA Section 4.0109. And to my knowledge, since the, since the vote was passed and approved by DOI on January sixteenth, there's never been a new constitution published or issued stating that, that amendment has been added. Counsel Barry mentioned that there was Article two, Section twenty-six in the constitution that, he showed it to me prior to this meeting, and it essentially mirrors the language of ASCA 4.0109. However, again, I would note that there was never anything presented to the voters and never anything passed by the Constitutional Convention, never anything issued by DOI stating that 4.0109 was going to be the statute and the language used for the constitutional impeachment process. So my question would be, how, how can the Fonu ensure that this bill complies with the constitutional amendment procedure when the constitutional amendment procedure has not yet been written or approved by the Department of the Interior?
We believe the, the Constitution has authorized the process. And even in somewhat vague language that was submitted and approved, it does provide that the governor and lieutenant governor can be impeached, but there is no process. The process was... The process was still under section, the old Section 40109. Although, as you've mentioned, the, the grounds for that impeachment were somewhat limited. So this bill expands on that. And we believe the phono has the authority to set not only the criterions for bringing charges and the charges attending thereto, that it does not necessarily conflict with the constitution. Because the constitution just provided the very broad framework and the authority to do that. Because if the constitution did not, that authorizes the election of the governor and lieutenant governor did not permit the impeachment, we may not be able to do that. They may just write off their four-year terms and there's nothing anybody can do. But when the constitution says they are impeachable. But even though, in our belief, even though it does not specifically say that the phono will endeavor to put in the, we believe the original constitution did address that. And that was the result of Section 4.0109. That's why that section was approved immediately after the constitution was approved, permitting the, the, the election of the governor and the lieutenant governor. But at that point in time, it didn't specifically say they're impeachable. Not until this recent Constitutional Convention. So this is just an expansion to that broad authority that was given by the last approval, which is now, even though it has not been published yet and we're still struggling with the same issue that you are, we're still looking for someone to put the publication out and make it public so everybody knows what their rights are under the new, even the districts that are entitled to additional members are still not, they still have not addressed those just yet. So thank you for pointing that out and it's true. We hope that somebody is going to deliver us the approved copy so that we can then tell everybody, this is the changes to your constitution and we have to live by it. Because it does affect our operation here too, in some respects.
Thank you very much.
Ole sun'ronga le sungaloi'a, le sungaya David Weisner, stasio o lo'oe alo'ongalu'e ile, ile ta'tau legal eight. A'oe'fo'io lo'ofa'tanga'ina fe'ila na private practice. Ia o'iala stasio o lo'oe alo'oo tanga'itu to'fo'io itu laanga iya mo'le par association. Ia le'ala i'aila na mo'lima le nei ta'au sapsapaia le, ile, ile tu lafono taufa'afi. A'na'ala na pa'unga le'me sa'apopole ai ona ole swinga le fa'ava'e le'a na talia talu'e nei ele interior. E le'ota'au o mayai'ale i'ani tulanga, ya tulanga fa'apitoa iasau tu tono le tu lafono taufa'afi. Na pa'ua le'me le'sau le le'a fo'io le swinga le fa'ava'e le'a ema fai ona fatula'i. Ema fai ona fatula'i le'ala na ma talanoa i'ofa'apula iai ole anganga o le mota. Ole tu lafono le'a e fa'au popoa tu ile swinga le fa'ava'e. Pa'ula le'me le fa'ema'ele fa'ava'e ema fai ona fatula'i ile kovana, po'ole lute na kovana. Awaa ilo'ota'afi. Anafa'apea le'a ile, ile va'angal na. E'iaile avanoa i'avatu a'ele famisinoa fa'apea mai'la'ampi. E'la'iasa me'ofa'ima'ia iema fai oto'ongu fa'kula'i se, se kovana. Longa'wanga eh, eh sewa'altaimi e'fatau sang'a le kovana se i'uma. Ele ema fai o tus'abo le'a le'a mi'ole anganga le kovana tus'abo ame tupu'ele ema fai o tu laanga le'aisa fa'ta'ana. Ile, ah, phono le fa'ava'e le'a le talu'e nei. Le'ala na tu'lo'iai male, male foitau na, ema fai ona fatula'i. Ya le'ala o ng'a osia ta'tau le ngayo inga, ole fatula'inga. Ya le'afiai uma ya le'ua fa'apopo iai soli nga tu lafono ma, ma'mea'uma. Ema fai aiai ona fatula'i asa kovana po'osa lute na kovana. Pe'a'afai ole ta'la fe'anga'ama le tu lafono, alanga iyo inga itu tono tofi. Ia le'ala o'a fa'ima'ele li'iu fi'a fi'a fo'io iai ile tulanga'ala na e taliala le'ia le tulanga pe'ona. Ta'pe na'ina le phono fe'tu lafono. Ia pe'ini esiri mo'le. Se'akomona'ala le'me le'ama'ta'i simero'anga amomoa.
Te komiti. Ole na'avaa popula ma'mlamai pe'ona eh fa'apula i'ile tu lafono. Ole ma'mlamapai phono sa'nuanga. Ia fa'ava'e le'ava'ia ole ema fai ona fai le'me na, ole'ala ilugo la'tato phono. Pe'ole olanga tonu na la'tatu, la'tatu tu lafono le taufa'afi. Ina i'avatu a'ta'tau a'an'oli la tu lafono. Ia to'a iwa e'wa'mfai ona fatula'i le, le kovana po'ole lute na kovana. Ole itu tonu la'fa'ava'e. Pa'ula le'me na e mo'oe iai phono sa'nuanga. Ia pa'ul mesiri ole'avaa ta'tau phano'olo'oe i'lo'ia la'tau fo'io fa'tuanga. Ia mesiri ole'avaa tus'ai'ole fa'amo'emo'ea, fa'afta'i.
Iasina esiri sia le famu'ole laufyonga te te komiti tulanga le pili le'a. Talu'e iyo le'a o'be'ana ba'tu esiri talu'e iyo no'ol tu laanga ole, ole amendment le'a ya tu tono le constitution. Okay, ol'mele le ta'apule o makofau. A'fa'apea e'alu le amendment le'tono le constitution. Longa'wanga ko'ikofoka'ola le rangfo'idele fai'inga ve'oe fa'apasia. Lang'a le'ke'ava'ia ku'i'ala ol'mele is Section 2, Page 3. Effective date, this bill shall become effective upon passage by the legislature and approval by the governor. Ole mele le ta'apule a'fa'apea to go through ta'tau ile process le'a amaninga le constitution. Do we have to go through the whole process again in order to get this thing implemented? Or can we use this outside of the constitution so we can do locally? And then we wait for another five years or whatever to get this into the amendment for the constitution? That's why I kind of worry, but you, you, you guys are lawyers, you can explain to us, see where we stand on this.
Subsection F is just advisory, is not mandatory. It reads, "The appropriate, at the appropriate time and in the appropriate manner, this section or its substance should be considered." So it doesn't say it will be submitted. And it just said, "It should be considered as a constitutional amendment to the revised constitution of American Samoa." So that means if the legislature determines at a future time that we want this to be in the constitution, then we can then go through the process. Senate joint resolution that joins with the House. And if both houses pass, then it goes through the election. So it only advises that if the phono decides that it should, these things should be in the constitution, then it will be presented at that time. Unless the, Mr. Weisner has a different understanding of that subsection.
No, that, that's also my understanding, Senator.
Ole tulanga'ala na e laufyong, ole, ole subsection na'ina unfa'tu o mai. Aia ise taimi le luma na'i e finangalo le phono. Eh ta'una tu'itu tono le fa'ava'e iya ona fa'ilo'ala se swinga e'ale a'i. Eh fa'anga'io i'ala tu lafono iya. Laufyonga le presidene.
Impeachment nei e'inga laufyonga te te komiti olai, la'ikongo la'fa'ava'e sa'. Al'process na'ale pe'fa'fe'ongu fa'kula'i.
Ole'ala fa'tasi aiai ma soli nga tu lafono ema fai aiai.
So'ka'ua la'le'ole le'me. Kas fa'ka'ika'inga. Kai'pi'ala le'me le kupungin maloku'oku kas. Pa'me'efongu fe'kalai. Ele ema fai nga ve'se'au la'ngane kongo la'fa'ava'e. Kai'koku salama le'me le. Pe'ala le'me le sa'ongu iko'ole la'ufyonga'utu. Ama'anga'ala nga kore luma'anga iya ku'iko kongo la'fa'ava'e le process le. In ku'le iya? La'iai le impeachment le fa'ava'e, e'le'ope fa'fe'ongu on'faka'ungu. Le'ala o'mer ku'la phono fa'ka'ungu, wa'i.
Manu. So can we pros, can we use this process to make the, the one that's on inside the constitution, make it happen? I mean, can we really make this thing affect outside of the constitution? How is the constitution going to connect into the, the local laws that we're trying to do? We want to make sure that it doesn't, you know, we don't want to be, wait out there in the nowhere and this thing's still up in the air. How you guys view this? Because if do's or don'ts, I mean, can we use this outside of the constitution and make the process manifest over here there? What, how do you guys, I want to make sure this is, can we use the process to, to, to work on what we have right now based on this outside of the constitution? But the only problem is, this bill is, is connected to what we want to do. The amendment to go into court, that's why I'm, I'm worried. So how you guys view on this?
Well, I can't speak for anybody other than myself. And the ultimate determination of how this would be interpreted is a question for the court. So I, I, the, the purpose of me being here today is just to kind of have, have this discussion. So if this issue does come up, that the court can look towards the legislative intent of the passage of this and see what the methodology of the phono behind it and what they intended it to be in order to make a appropriate ruling if it does end up going to court at some point.
The constitution merely says the governor or the lieutenant governor can be impeached. How is it going to be done? It's not in the constitution. That's what this bill provides. This is the process. Because if we wait for the constitution, the constitution doesn't say, doesn't address how to achieve that impeachment. It's going to depend on the law. Now, what Mr. Weisner is talking about, if there's any conflict in this law and the constitution, then the court will make that decision. However, since there is no process provided by the constitution, this being the only process, the only issue that may possibly be relevant in the future is, how does this law addresses due process? Because that becomes the most important thing, is the due process accorded to the officer being impeached. So we believe the statute is straightforward, simple, and it's open. So we can only try it. If any questions, we, that's what the courts are there for. They will make that decision sometime in the future.
So my own recommendation is to go through the whole bill here and make this happen and approve. So this is a fallback because it doesn't spell out in the constitution, right? There's no process. So let's, we can stay within the local laws to do what we have to do in order to impeach the, the governor and lieutenant governor, right? Because we have to have a fallback. If there's no process in the constitution of the impeachment clause, then we have to go somewhere else, which is we can fall back on what is in this bill. Because it doesn't spell in the constitution. So therefore, if it's not spelled there, this should be take the precedence, right? I mean, I need to know what the...
Le'ala le'to'nu'ua e sa'nu'iai, e'aisa'fti na'inga'ala sa'nuanga. Ia manu ta'tau ngayo inga le ne'iasu fa'afta'i. Laufyonga le'tameta.
E'ua lo'vesiri i'ua le ma'mlamakako'ala, supor'ama e, e monma'ua. Ole ng'ekewo kongu'umi akumu ma'makou'li kakou le'me le fai. E pa'ula le'me le kakua le'a ema fai ona fa'kula'i. Ile impeachment nei, olai'li tu lafono, ol'mele le'ila'ula ngona. Ole le'ala o'mai'ala o'la'vanoa i'akakou e'fai o e'kakou. Pe'fa'afe'aa o'a'aua la'fai e'ufa'kula'i, a'ema fai. Ila'unga ke'ikongu'anga ke'ixie'ua le'ola ka'iku'ala le'maka'uku. Pe'ul'eme'fanga'iai le'anga'le esiri a'fyo'anga esinta'ua ma'kula'anga le'ua kakou fa'angolo'olo. Ole ufo'ufai monma'ua ng'asa'au la sa'nuanga, me'fai e, ma'efoi sa'nuanga de. Te'akar'afe'apule ol'ala sentoa i'au'tu. A'ki'ro'a e'kasia'ala le ka'ri'ua e'ka'upula.
Ma'di?
E'ko'ema'ia i'akakou. Aw'a kakou e'fai aiai a'inga iya, mal'farar.
You, you guys understood all that, right? All right. There being no other questions, Mr. Weisner, thank you very much for your comments and for taking time to assist us in trying to consider what's appropriate for going forward with this submitted legislation. We're now move to Mr. McGuire. You're free to, you're free to leave if you want, but...
Thank you very much, I appreciate the opportunity, thank you.
Thank you very much for appearing. Mr. McGuire, the floor is yours.
Yes, I'll keep, I'll keep my testimony short and sweet. I'm also a member of the bar practice limited to lands and titles court. But my position today is personal and it's after discussing it with my alava clan and some of the faipuli. The big issue for me is that, A, I really appreciate the fact that the senate is now holding public hearings on television. The problem with previous constitutional conventions is, in my opinion, that they, a lot of things don't pass because the public is not educated enough to make decisions. And, and I feel that this body of honorable senators is taking a real step forward by the simple fact today that we did have a high school student come and testify. And if you want legislation to pass, my sole reason for being here is, you need, not this body, but the, the other sitting house needs to be more transparent. It should be public knowledge that the new phono building will be open on July 19th for the next session. There's been a lot of money spent on camera equipment in both chambers. And in the future, we would hope to see hearings as held today being held in the House of Representatives. My only problem with this bill is Section D, the House of Representatives has the sole power to bring articles of impeachment. That's all well and good, but where's the level playing field here? I mean, there's an old saying, people in glass houses really shouldn't throw stones. And in my personal opinion, if, if the House of Representatives, which is an elective body, is going to pass judgment on the overall general two people that are elected to govern the whole island, in my simple opinion, it doesn't seem fair to me that they can shoot at the governor and lieutenant governor, yet they're not accountable by impeachment themselves. And this isn't the place where that should be added into the bill. But the public and the people that I've spoke to, particularly Kona Leah Tefeli, his father was the first lieutenant governor and we've discussed this issue. And, and my son-in-law was also the lieutenant governor. I just feel that this body is doing a very good job of, of, of putting these bills out. But there's a weak link in the whole process. And I'm just addressing you honorable senators today that when you, if you do, when you do pass this legislation, that it needs to be bear in mind that the transparency is not across the board. That's all I have to say today, thank you.
Do you sir, offer any alternative to the House initiating the proceedings? Because here's the thing, we are following exactly the United States model. This is how it's done in the United States. If a sitting president is misbehaving, the House of Representatives can bring articles of incorporation, the articles of impeachment. And if they vote in favor of impeachment, then the trial is held in the senate with the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court sitting as presiding justice in the process. And the, the senate votes whether to impeach or not. And if the president is convicted for impeachment, then the, the president must leave the office. That's exactly the model that we are following here. Because the House of Representatives is, is an elected body. So as you well know, that even in the order of succession, it's the House of Representatives that gets the favor, not the senate. So that's where the law prefers the system to begin. Now, you're objecting to that...